Thank you, Rob. So we'll bring the meeting to order. Our committee, the whole meeting of May 11th today. Is there any declaration of interest regarding any item on the agenda today? Not seeing any. If one should arise, make us aware of it. This morning, we have a delegation. We have Wayne Caldwell from the University of Guelph. He's going to speak, give a presentation on lot creation policies in the future of Ag in Ontario. And I believe Scott is going to introduce Mr. Caldwell.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Warden. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Wayne Caldwell. Dr. Caldwell is respected across Ontario and across Canada. In fact, he's a fellow of the Canadian Institute of Planners. Dr. Caldwell is a longtime professor with the University of Guelph and a former planner with Huron County. Dr. Caldwell has dedicated his career to researching the intersection between agriculture, agricultural lands protection and planning. We're very, very thankful across Gray and across Ontario for the research that Dr. Caldwell and his team have done. And just on a more homegrown note, I'd also like to thank Wayne and the University of Guelph for all the support they've shown Gray County over the years. I was trying to add it up this morning. Just in my time here, we've been, we've had the opportunity to partner with Wayne and his students eight times on different projects where students have completed research projects for, for Gray County. So that really means a lot to us and to the county. And so with that, I'll turn it over through you, Mr. Warden, to Dr. Caldwell for his presentation.
Thank you, Scott, and welcome, Mr. Caldwell. It's a pleasure to see you this morning, and we're happy to have you give this presentation. So take it away, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I truly appreciate the invitation. And I was going to say, I had it in my list of things to do to thank Scott and County Council for all of your reception of our students over the years. I know it's been equally rewarding. I've been just fantastic working, working with your staff and, and council on issues which are relevant for, for Gray County. And speaking of relevant issues for Gray County, I think it's a great opportunity to take some time to reflect on the proposed changes that the province is bringing forth in the revised provincial policy statement. I don't pretend to be an expert in everything. I'll look to Scott for some of that as relates to the PPS. But what I have spent much of my career focused on from a research and practice perspective is the impact of severances in rural Ontario and what is the right balance between what should be allowed and what should not be allowed. And I would suggest to you that what we have in front of us today is a fundamental problem for agriculture in this province. And I will explore and explain some of those thoughts as well. So let me share my screen. I have a slide deck. And I'm trusting everyone can see that okay. If I might, Mr. Warden, I'd like to start with a little story, actually. And this takes me back almost 40 years to my first job as a planner in Huron County. And I had the responsibility of helping our local municipality, East Wollongong Township, which was my home municipality where I was raised, develop a new official plan for that municipality. And in that process, we went through a series of public meetings with the community, 100 people in attendance out of a community of 1,000. Quite amazing. We talked about agriculture. We talked about natural environment. We talked about aggregates. We talked about urban issues and so on. And at the back of the room, for each of these meetings was a big burly farmer. And he liked to ask really tough questions, heckle now and then, and stand up. And it was all in all an issue for me. But I got through the meetings, felt a little bit smaller with each subsequent meeting, but got through those meetings. And then we went away and sat down with the local municipality. And we developed the policies to be put into that official plan. And we go back to a subsequent public meeting where we present the draft plan to council and to the public, of course. And my friend, the big burly farmer, was at the back of the room, but this time he wasn't asking any questions. He wasn't heckling me. He wasn't standing up. And I thought, boy, he's so angry with me. He's going to meet me out in the parking lot afterwards. But finally, at the end of the meeting, he stands up and he says, this is a good plan. You listen to what we had to say. So not only the lesson of listening, but the question was, what was it that we put into that plan that had him so satisfied with the outcome? And in that plan, prior to the plan being developed, the county allowed surplus residential severances, severances from farms for surplus residences. And we, in fact, took those policies completely out and allowed no residential severances in the municipality, except in the towns and villages, of course. And what had occurred prior to us developing the plan was that there was a, an accountant who was actually going around. He met all of the legal definitions of being a farmer. And he was purchasing farm parcels, severing off the house, then he'd go to the next farm, sell, do the same thing, sever the, the house off, sell the farmland. And he went through this period of seven or eight times. Well, that had this farm community so upset that they said, no, we don't want any more residential severances. In fact, I would suggest to you what we're looking at today, courtesy of the province's revisions, are tens of thousands of those kinds of opportunities being created. In fact, even within Gray County, you're looking at many, many, many opportunities for residential severances intermixed with agriculture. And for me, that's a fundamental concern. And I think for the farm community, it is as well. So let me take you through my slide deck. I'll just start with pointing out three or four key things on the left. The existing policy on the right is what a legal firm has put together in terms of documenting the changes. And I'm just going to speak to the arrows in the interest of time. But residential lot creation in prime agricultural lands is only permitted in accordance with provincial guidance. And what it says under item two, the total number of lots created from a lot or parcel of land as is existing on January 1, 2023 does not exceed three. So the policy is allowing three severances per parcel of land for residential purposes. Further on, the next arrow at the, towards the bottom. And I find this to be problematic because official plans and zoning by law shall not contain provisions that are more restrictive than, than the above policy, except to address public health or safety concerns. So what it's essentially saying is that even for counties and regions that might choose to have concerns with this is you can't act upon them. You must allow the three severances that the province is requesting. And in addition to that, next arrow here is subordinate to the principal dwelling up to two residential units may be permitted in prime agricultural areas as well. So it's allowing these severances to occur. And in addition to that, two additional dwellings on those severed parcels as well. And I know that within the county planning report that you have in front of you, and I would tend to agree that more residential units on the existing farms is, is appropriate. I would have a concern with this being repeated by tens of thousands of situations in terms of new additional residential units in addition to the severances. So let me take you through some of the specifics of this. I won't spend too, too much time in this slide. But to say that in, in Ontario, we have roughly 48,346 farms, but the number of parcels that are being farmed is much greater than the number of farms. And we anticipate there's probably 170,000 parcels as a minimum out there that would be eligible for these kinds of severances. So we're looking at the potential for upwards of 500,000 plus in terms of severance, severances that would actually occur. So again, that becomes a significant concern in terms of its impact. And let's look increasingly at some of those impacts. I will mention this particular slide. I don't need to spend too, too much time on it. Folks around the council table will appreciate how important agriculture is and how important livestock production is in a county such as Gray. I heard a great reference to beef production in Gray County earlier. And, but certainly we have other forms of agriculture as well. And in a moment, I'll take you to the relationship between that, the severances and the minimum distance separation formula that I suspect all of council is familiar with in terms of how we regulate appropriate distances between livestock facilities and houses and what the impact of that will be. So as we're looking at, at the specifics, this is a sample photo taking actually in Wellington County of the kind of development that we would be looking at. If we look at the bear field on the left and the, the grass area on the right, you can see on the left, we have three residential lots historically that were severed. On the right, we have in this instance, two. Across the road, we would have one. The new provincial policy, if implemented as proposed, would in fact allow 12 in that space where you could have three dwellings at each intersection of, of what are likely four farms in that location. And in addition to that, then of course, the potential for additional dwelling units to be established, which could yield 36 dwelling units in that particular space. Sounds like a small village to me. So I, to be honest, Mr. Warden, I tend not to engage myself in the public in this way. I do my research. I leave it out there for folks to interpret. But I feel so personally concerned about this that I've put out a series of tweets. And I'll just take you through these tweets in a fairly quick format, starting in the bottom right. And on the bottom right, you can see a tweet that was released on the 13th of April. And the proposed new, I'll take you through these fairly quickly. The proposed new provincial policy statement will force municipalities to allow up to three new residential lots per farm and two accessory residential units in each of these. And indicating this is a radical shift in 50 years of planning for agricultural land in Ontario. Someone challenged me on the word radical because radical could be good. I don't see it that way at all. I see in this instance, it's fundamental concern that all of us interested in agriculture and rural communities should be thinking about. Second tweet above that, simply to say that we've had a policy framework in Ontario, going back to the Food Land Guidelines that were released in the 1970s, supported by essentially every subsequent government, whether, you know, conservative, whether it be liberal, whether it be NDP, in terms of recognizing the importance of agriculture relative to residential sprawl. And that policy guidance has been in place until today. Third quote above that, while green belt changes caused much concern, justifiably, the province's new PPS agricultural severance policy is in many ways much worse. And if I'd had space with my tweet, because you're limited to the number of characters, I would have said much, much worse because it would be the possibility for hundreds of thousands of new lots being scattered amongst farms across the province. The quote above that, on a typical concession block, and I see that in your staff report, they refer to this as well in terms of at least 30 new residential lots, based on the traditional layout of, of several, of survey, if you like, within the province. With MDS, there will be virtually no space for growth in the livestock sector. Indeed, I think we should ask the question, is this the beginning of the end for animal agriculture in Ontario? Two more recent quotes, quotes or tweets on April 21st. I wonder if MTO has given thought to the proposed severance policy for ag areas. Given two sides of a provincial highway and five farms in each side, this could result in up to 30 requests for new entrance permits for a concession road frontage per one and a quarter miles. Looking at both sides of the road, five farms fronting of the road or five parcels fronting the road would create that possibility. And you can, you know, those of you who have responsibility for local roads will start to see what the implications of that will be. It won't happen everywhere all at once, but over time, one would need to anticipate what that means for speed limits, safety access, simply driving down the road with a piece of large equipment on a, behind a tractor, having to navigate mailboxes and so on, as an example. And I also wonder in the final tweet there, whether the province adequately considered what the implications would be for the aggregate sector. And agriculture and aggregates tend to share the same space for the most part. And I think for the aggregate sector, it's similar to agriculture, sterilization of the resource once houses are built. And if you can imagine, and I'm sure all of you around the council table have experienced applications for aggregate or quarries, gravel or quarries operations with neighbors having concerns, sometimes legitimate, sometimes, you know, it's a knee, a knee jerk reaction from neighbors. But imagine trying to establish a new pit or quarry with 90 new residences per concession block. And theoretically, you could actually double that because you have two sides of the road with houses facing it, which would then be 180 potential new residences per concession block with, with concerns at that number of three units per, per severed lot. So I put this slide in just to, again, all of you will have familiarity in Gray with how diverse and productive and, and and large agriculture is in some ways. And we can see, you know, hog operations, a poultry operation in the bottom left. We can see, you know, large grain drying facilities in the top right. And I included intentionally a photo of some evolving technology with drones. Again, trying to farm in a space with that number of severed lots and that number of residences potentially around them. And simply to bring focus on the size and scale of agriculture and, and truly, you know, people will sometimes refer to agriculture as an industrial activity. And I think it's not an unreasonable term to use. And again, we tend to know that in, in planning context, industry, large scale agriculture and many variations of agriculture is not a good mix with residential development. So I spend a lot of my time thinking about the future of agriculture. There's reasons to think that we might have, if we look at international trends, increasing productivity over time, there's reasons to think we might have decreasing productivity. Climate change being an example of that. But I would never have thought that in my career, that our provincial land use policy could be such a threat to the future of agriculture in Ontario. And I say that for a variety of reasons. And, and I just pull this up for a little bit of humor, but you know, notice this, this property is a farm. Farms have animals. Animals make funny sounds, smell bad and have sex outdoors unless you can tolerate noise, odors and outdoor sex. Don't buy property next to a farm. And my comment is that this may seem funny, but I think we're at risk of losing the farm voice in this process. Again, as it would be fulfilled over time. So I've done a fair bit of research, looking at surplus, looking at severances of all natures across the province. And we're in the process of doing, looking at the last 10 years, but this is a 20 year time period between 1990 and 2010. And the top line are retirement lots. Some of you will recall those being granted and being allowed to be granted under provincial policy. And the blue line is surplus dwelling lots, severances for that purpose, which are still permitted by provincial policy. We can see that in 2005, there was a change to the provincial policy statement that said retirement lots will no longer be permitted in the province. And you can see they dropped off essentially to zero with the surplus dwelling lots remaining fairly constant over time in terms of those being severed. We also had Farm Help and infill lots historically, and they again were eliminated in 2005. Red being infill lots, which is looking at, you've got a residential lot here and a residential lot here in the countryside. And there's a bit of space between them and a new severance could occur in that location. Likewise, Farm Help lots back in the early 1990s were quite prevalent and they dropped off gradually over time until 2005, when again provincial policy eliminated those. So if we look at these kinds of severance trends that have happened historically, what does it mean in practice? So what we did is we looked at our severance data over this time period, this 20 year time period again. And we looked at the distribution of residential lots created per thousand acres. And these were severances that occurred on prime farmland. So this isn't your cottage development and so on. This is what was occurring in prime farmland. And you can see some fairly wide variation across the province. You can see Gray County over that 20 year period, having 1.31 severances per 1,000 acres interspersed with agriculture. And we can also look at Perth County, which is right down here at point 08, which had the lowest ratio in the province. And we can look at Essex County at the bottom with 6.78, or we can look at Prince Edward County at 7.55. So what does that mean in practice? What it means in practice that if you're in Prince Edward County and you're farming, you've got on average 7.5 new neighbors, residential neighbors per 1,000 acres than you had at the start of that 20 year period. Whereas in Perth County, circumstances virtually did not change at all. And if we look at what that means, and we'll bring an MDS lens to that, you can see in this particular diagram here. On the right hand side, we have Perth County with their point 08 severances per 1,000 acres of farmland, which means that you need, I think, 20,000 acres per one severance, which means that the amount of land that would be, would receive new restrictions from MDS is that tiny little sliver that you see there. And that's based on someone wanting to establish a new hog operation of 2,000 feeder hogs, which requires a 552 meter radius. If we look in the left, Prince Edward County, which had 7.55 severances per 1,000 acres of farmland, you can see the amount of land that received new restrictions, additional restrictions than was the case at the start of that deck, at that 20 year time period. What we see on the left is fairly significant. If we look at what the province is proposing, we see here what it would look like in terms of 30 new severed lots on a typical, typical concession block. And again, this is only looking at one side of the road. And you can see the area identified as restricted based on the MDS again for 2,000 feeder hog operation. If we were looking at a 4,000 feeder hog barn, it would be looking at 700 meters, which would mean there's virtually no space for someone wanting to establish a livestock operation of that nature in that particular concession block. Granted, different kinds of livestock operations require different kinds of distances. I had a reporter ask me so, and she said something to the effect, so the problem then is MDS. And I said, no, 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 don't get, don't, don't conflate the two. The issue is all of those residential lots with people living on them that have expectations for what they expect to occur in the countryside. MDS is a helpful tool which allows us to establish what those appropriate distances might be. So with that, just one, one or two more slides. Also, I just wanted to point out some other things that I don't think, and I think the policy has come together very quickly at the provincial level without regard to what some of their own staff might have been saying. And I think there's a whole series of other issues that should be thought about. Aggregate extraction I mentioned, water availability and safety. What does this mean for natural heritage? What does it mean for small towns and villages? Does it mean that if I wanted to establish a, a, a new subdivision in one of your small towns and villages that I look at it and I think, oh, this is a good idea. Until I realized that in immediate proximity to me, within a few kilometers of that town or village, there could be literally hundreds of new severances established to allow residential development without going through the process of proper studies, proper water, sewage, and so on and so forth. So I think there's an impact there that has not been thought about. What does it mean for school boards? What does it mean for servicing, et cetera, et cetera? So with that, Mr. Warden, I've gone through that fairly quickly. But I wanted to share some of the concerns that I personally have, some of the concerns that I'm hearing from the farm community. Some of the concerns I'm certainly hearing from planning staff across the province in terms of what this would, would and could fundamentally mean for agriculture. And as I said earlier, it's not that I see this change happening over, I mean, the policy change might happen overnight, but the impact in the ground won't happen overnight. But in time, there will be someone who faces this diagram up here on the top right center, wanting to establish or do something in agriculture and find themselves constrained significantly about it. So from my perspective, these are fundamental concerns and I appreciate council taking the time to hear me on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caldwell. And as a farmer myself, I'm very concerned about this as well. Are there any questions for Mr. Caldwell? Counselor Echols.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Wayne, and your long experience in this will send some frustration that I think we share with the province in some of the ways that they put their policies forward. Because one of them, and it, it comes from your analogy with Prince Edward County and Perth County, and how different agriculture is in both of those areas. I mean, you know, Prince Edward County, I've had the opportunity to be there a couple of times. Their development through the vegetable or fruit production and certainly in their wine production. You don't see quite as many hog barns in Prince Edward County as you do in Perth County, which is very much recognized as a hog production area. And it's one of the things that I've found problematic with the province is that they put forward a policy that's broad. It's for everybody. And, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's housing, social services or provincial policy planning statements. Things are a lot different in the Ottawa Valley than they are in the Beaver Valley. How do we get around to having the province listen to us that once you, you know, one size doesn't fit all. We need to make a variance here somehow or another before this goes down the rabbit hole that we'll never be able to get out of and causes great deaths by starvation.
And I think it's a great observation. And in some ways, even if the province wanted to do this and wanted to continue to do this, if they simply remove the policy that forces municipalities to follow the same criteria, historically, municipality could, you have, you have to be up to the minimum, but you could be more restrictive than what the provincial policy is, as an example. And if that were to occur, then Gray County Council and their wisdom could choose a severance policy that works best for Gray. Whereas in the Ottawa Valley as an example, they might choose something quite different. And I think that that, that in its own right would, would at least provide an avenue to make sure that those areas which are immersed in livestock production. Although I want to say this isn't just about livestock production either. Speaking to folks from the Niagara region as an example, they have, they have significant concerns as well. And as it relates to, imagine bird bangers going off, right? Or imagine farmers in Essex County with all of their greenhouses. Or imagine farmers with large equipment going down the road. I mean, I, it's not just a livestock issue. But I think what we need to do is, is really try to the best that we can to drive home to the province that this is a fundamental concern. And to me, I'm speaking mostly about agriculture, but it's such a concern from a rural community perspective in terms of, you know, the 150 years of how our communities have evolved have not been based on this kind of activity being encouraged essentially in agricultural areas. So I think there's a real concern there that we need to look at. But what I've been trying to do is work with the farm groups as well to make sure that they're, because this has happened quickly. I think if I remember correctly, it's something like June the 5th, that the comments are expected to be submitted. And Scott can confirm that perhaps. But I just think that, you know, the farm groups need to speak out in this because we've seen the, the extent to which the province has changed policy based on planning input or based on municipal input. I think the farm groups really need to get involved in this too. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, counselor. But, but it's certainly a complex issue. And I think the, the best we can do is to try to make sure that the province understands this is such a fundamental concern for the future of agriculture in this province. We really need to be positive and progressive to try to make sure that we protect agriculture.
I'm kind of close. And what I've said for many years, we, a nation can't be called sovereign nation if we can't feed ourselves. And the promotion towards winery and wine production. And as we heard this morning, some people are into their 10th anniversary of that. And what's, you know, society's bigger thing is, oh, a wine and cheese. What's even better, you know, better than that on a Saturday afternoon on your deck in the rural area? But if we have to import our cheese from New Zealand and/or from wherever, Switzerland, how does that make it correct? And if we can't feed ourselves and if we go blindly down this road and we end up being that, we end up sacrificing our ability to be a sovereign nation, I feel. And, and thank you. I'll look forward, I'll look forward to, because I see in the audience here, we have a, a member from the provincial OFA or director, very interested in this as well too. And I've talked to Paul many times about this and where, where is this a tipping point that we've got to take very seriously?
And I would just add to that too, that once in place, there's no going back. It's not to say a future government won't re undo the policy. But there's no going back in the sense as I look out my window on our farm here as an example at the moment. And if there's three houses there, they're not going away down the road, right? If those severed lots were to be created in the neighboring property, they're in perpet, they're, they're essentially in perpetuity.
Any other questions from council? Anything you wish to add, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Nothing at this time. I'd just like to thank Wayne again on behalf of staff and council. And, and I, I believe after the consent agenda, my report is up next. So I'll, I'll share my comments at that time.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. And thank you very much, Mr. Caldwell. I certainly appreciate your efforts this morning to make us really understand the impact that this could have on our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And the best wishes and your deliberations.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council. It's 10 to 11. Do you want to recess or keep going for a bit? All right, we'll keep going for a bit. Next item is determination items from the consent agenda. Anybody wish any of those removed for further, Counselor Gray?
Thank you, Warden Mill. And I would like to speak separately to item CS 1223 within the Community Services Committee minutes later.
Okay, so that is item 6E. Is that correct? Yes. All right, that is noted. Any others? Would someone care to make a motion to accept the rest of the consent items? Counselor Keveney, Counselor Body? Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving right along to items for direction and discussion. And as Scott promised, his report is up on the draft provincial policy statement. Good morning and again, Scott, and the podium is yours, sir. Wait, I need a mover and seconder. Counselor Carlton and Counselor Patterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden and members of County Council. I think any meeting where you get to hear from two different planners is, is a pretty good meeting. So happy to be here to present to you. I, I again, I'm very, very thankful for, for the work and, and the support that we get from, from people like Dr. Caldwell and the University of Guelph in, in driving research across the province. And I will say, just as a preface to, to this report, a number of you saw iterations of, of different presentations that staff have already made on this at both the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee last week. So I won't go through this again in detail based on, on those presentations. I would also like to thank all the, the staff in Gray that have contributed towards these reports, both the planning staff and then people like our deputy CIO and our CIO and others that have given input. Because, you know, I think as we can all appreciate, the provincial planning statement and, and more specifically agriculture touches a number of different county portfolios. And Dr. Caldwell talked about potentially the impact on local roads and the impact on MTO. But I also think of Pat and his team and our own county roads. And if we were to see that level of lot creation across the county, what would that look like for our county road network? In addition to your own municipal road networks in that regard? I will say, just as we get into this, the province has, has announced a number of changes through this draft provincial planning statement. County staff do support. Um, county staff do support some changes. There's some very good, uh, changes in there with respect to the, the, uh, housing options definition, the coordination of services between school boards and, and housing service managers. Um, some clarification on the additional residential unit policies. Uh, there's other changes that might have mixed opinions such as, uh, allowing planning authorities to plan for a longer time period beyond, uh, twenty-five years. Uh, and then there's the changes similar to what we heard from, from Dr. Caldwell this morning that staff do have great concern with. I will say in general, uh, the province announced that this provincial policy statement is, is supposed to be a, a housing forward, um, um, provincial direction in this regard and, and certainly as staff, we do want to be at the table as partners with the province in looking at housing solutions across the province. Uh, we do feel as staff that, that there's a number of opportunities that we can make at the county and municipal levels uh, that would aid in the housing market in that regard. Uh, but simply put, we feel that, uh, uh, that opening up our agricultural lands and some of our rural lands to further housing development, uh, might not be the best, uh, forward thinking solution. And so council will recall, we had a, a report presented by Liz Buckton on December eighth, uh, when the province first introduced this amalgamation of the, uh, provincial policy statement and the growth plan in that regard. At that time, there were no draft policies. It was simply a, a, uh, some discussion questions and putting us on notice that this was coming. And so on April sixth of this year is when we got the draft bill ninety-seven as well as the draft, what used to be called the provincial policy statement. Now it's called the provincial planning statement. I'm thankful that at least we kept the acronym, acronym the same. Um, in this regard, staff generally don't have any concerns with bill ninety-seven, uh, uh, at least in terms of the planning and development charges pieces. Uh, this isn't as sweeping as some previous bills and including bill twenty-three and bill one oh nine last year. A lot of it's i- is, is clarification and there are some positive bits in there. Uh, with respect to the provincial policy statement or provincial planning statement, sorry, changes. Um, there's a number of things that we are concerned with and, and, uh, just to build on some of Wayne's comments. Uh, uh, Liz Buckton and our GIS team and in collaboration with other counties across the, uh, across the, the province looked at the potential for lot creation across the county in our agricultural lands alone. So this does not include our special agricultural lands. It does not include our rural lands. Uh, on the upset limit, there could be up to ten thousand new residential lots created, uh, across that landscape. And if we think about the impact on our own, uh, municipal budgets and, and planning in that regard, it's significant. If we think about the impact on farming and land consumption, we roughly calculated that if we were to cite that number of new residential units uh, in our settlement areas, particularly our service settlement areas, then citing them in the agricultural areas would take ninety-three percent more land uh, than it would be to accommodate a similar, similar number of housing units, uh, in our settlement areas where, where, uh, each of your municipalities have already made significant investments in, in, uh, infrastructure in that regard. Uh, I think it was a really good discussion at the Agricultural Advisory Committee, uh, similar to councillor Eccles' comments from earlier today. Uh, a one-size-fits-all approach is, is simply tough to, to, uh, look at across the province. Even across the county, we find a one-size-fits-all is, is very, very tough. I will say in terms of the feedback we heard from, from our committee members at the Agricultural Advisory Committee, there was diverse opinions. Uh, there was some that, uh, that raised significant concerns. And, and there were some that also said it would be good to have a little bit of flexibility. Maybe we don't want to go quite as far as, as what the province has suggested. Uh, but maybe some flexibility, particularly on those lower quality lands, uh, would be suitable in parts of Gray County. Um, there was certainly, um, some comments about the, the impacts on the potential cost of farmland going forward. Uh, if people know that they can, can buy a piece of farmland and, and sever three lots off. Uh, there was questions about the impact on environmental lands. Uh, so if farmers were to sever the, the lower quality productive lands on their farms, might be low areas, might be bushlots. Uh, yes, that might not directly contribute to the loss of productive agricultural land, uh, but there might be other natural, um, um, uh, environment features that are impacted there. Uh, there was also concerns about, uh, land use conflict and, and concerns about road safety and, and certainly as, as farming has evolved and we've seen larger and larger pieces of equipment. And we've seen more people on some of our rural roads that might not be used to driving in rural Ontario. Uh, the potential for real health and safety conflicts with respect to, uh, those impacts on, on the roads are, are, uh, are, are very real in that regard. We also heard comments from the egg advisory committee that the county's, county's current agricultural mapping isn't perfect. Um, staff will certainly acknowledge that. It's the best we have. A, a lot of, uh, time and effort was put into developing that mapping. But no, it's, it, it's certainly not per- perfect in that regard. And then there were some concerns about the lack of clarity in some of the policies the province is recommending in that regard. Uh, we also had a good discussion with the Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee on some of the other, uh, impacts, uh, with respect to some of the provincial policy changes. Um, certainly there was questions about the timing of when we'll see those natural heritage policies. Uh, there was questions about why the province would, would, uh, remove the definition of affordable as it pertains to housing in that regard, and particularly because that definition links affordability back to income rather than, than average market values in that regard. There was questions about the impact on our, our growth allocations and projections in that regard. Uh, and there seemed to be a desire for, for supporting, uh, some municipal autonomy. And as Dr. Caldwell said, uh, maybe removal of some of the restrictions that prevent municipalities from being more restrictive than the provincial planning statement in, in that respect. Um, we also had a meeting with our, uh, uh, local planners and, and municipal staff in that regard. A lot of the comments were very similar to, to what we heard, uh, from our various committees. Uh, there was concerns that the, the, um, uh, support for further lot creation in both agricultural and rural areas as well as, um, the removal of the policies with respect to comprehensive reviews for settlementary boundary changes uh, could undermine municipal efforts to, to, uh, see intensification and growth in some of our settlement areas. And, and you think about, you know, if you had a brownfield area in, in one of your communities and, and someone had to choose between buying, you know, a, a seven acre brownfield lot right in town and, and a fifty acre farm lot on the edge of town. Um, from their perspective, it might seem a, a, an easier road to, to, to navigate if you were to buy the, the lands outside of town and create lots in that way. Uh, there was concerns about the impacts on, on, uh, tax levels. And certainly, um, Town and Blue Mountains has done a lot of pioneering work in this regard to look at the impacts of density on taxes. And, and the more we build these, these sprawling, uh, communities and, and large rural lots, it makes it very difficult to, to recoup those funds, uh, from, from the municipal tax base uh, than it would if we were building slightly more intensive, uh, housing, uh, options in that regard. Um, and, and, um, there was also concerns about, about municipal staffing levels. And certainly if, if this change were to happen, uh, relatively soon, uh, and, and, uh, particularly for, for, uh, the seven municipalities outside of Hanover and Owen Sound that have rural and agricultural lands. Uh, would you have the staff cap- capacity, uh, to process all those consent applications, uh, for the new agricultural and rural lots in that regard? Um, there was also con- some concerns about the long-term planning and, uh, and the way the province has suggested that the planning horizon could be open-ended provided it's at least, uh, twenty-five years. And I will say that this came more so from our engineering friends than it did, uh, from, from the municipal planners. Um, but certainly if, if, uh, if you're trying to plan long-term and trying to, uh, consider, uh, asset management and your infrastructure spending dollars. Um, how does that look if you don't have a set timeframe in mind? Uh, and then finally, there were some other concerns with respect to, uh, servicing potentially being a, a step backwards in some, terms of some of the changes there. Um, so what we're seeking from committee of the whole today is, is, uh, support for this report to be received. Um, and that this report, along with the reports to the planning and, planning and economic, economic development advisory committee and agricultural advisory committee um, before non to the province as part of, as, uh, constituting the county's comments on these changes. I will say the, the, um, natural heritage policies are still outstanding. So in the draft provincial planning statement, uh, they're simply grayed out and, 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 uh, they'll be to follow. Uh, staff do have concerns here because it's tough to, to understand the full impact of, of these policy changes without seeing the environmental policies in this regard. Um, so if the province is to release those soon, and if, if they're to extend the commenting deadline, then certainly we could report back to, to county council on this topic. Um, the current comment deadline is June fifth and noting that we don't have another committee of the whole meeting until June the eighth. Our concern is that if the province releases the, the, uh, draft policies in the next day or week or so, um, then we might not have time to, to bring a report back to committee of the whole. Um, so depending on the scope of those changes, staff might seek, seek direction uh, to submit staff comments on that, not speaking on behalf of council. Or if there is an extended comment deadline, we could certainly, uh, bring something back to council in this regard. Uh, so with that, that's all I have at this stage, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Scott. Good report. Councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the report. Just in a part about the heritage policies. It was in one of the minutes that talked about maybe holding off on staff depending on where that goes. Because if it's all sudden wiped out. I, I'm not saying that, but you, I, I think they did have that feeling that it may be hold off on hiring staff if there are some significant changes there, right?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your question, Councillor McQueen. Uh, that's actually the subject of our next report. So, um, I look forward to a good discussion on that, but uh, i- in short, not to, 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 uh, to get into the next report, but staff haven't hired a planning ecologist yet. Uh, we did go through the, the hiring process and we even interviewed, um, but based on these, these, uh, this potential for planning changes at the provincial level, uh, we've held off on making any offers. And we have a further report to come to, uh, committee of the whole in, in just a few minutes on that.
Just a few minutes. Yep. Any other questions for Scott in this particular report? Councillor Dubrin.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Scott. And I, you have my full support on the report. The concern that Dr. Caldwell and yourself have, uh, expressed about the conflicts that could be created by these number of additional severances is real. It exists today. There's a farm that, uh, someone approached me as, you know, part of Conservation Authority uh, that is now being restricted because of the wisdom of, of having severances on the farm. The lot was sold and the well was installed almost at the property line. And now they're being very restricted as to where they can apply their farm manure. So, uh, the, the concern is real. And you indicate in your report, Scott, that there are a number of strip developments or checkerboard developments throughout Gray County whereby, you know, there might be two or four acres where there's one house and those additional severances in that area could actually benefit the municipality without further, uh, contributing to conflict or, uh, that MDS separation requirement. Is there, um, the opportunity, whether the PPS covers that or not? Is, is the county looking at, that look, making that less restrictive? And allowing those additional severances where they might now be, uh, restricted? If you know what I mean.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, thank you for your question, Councillor Dubrin. It's a good point. Um, staff had discussed at the county municipal level, um, whether it was worthwhile, and this is prior to the new draft provincial policy statement being released. Whether it was worthwhile bringing forward a bit of a discussion report to county council in the future uh, on our rural and agricultural, uh, policies across, across the county. Uh, particularly more so on the rural side where we might have some of those existing checkerboards. Um, you know, if we have those existing four acre lots in a checkerboard that could be divided into two, two acre lots, uh, maybe that's more beneficial than taking two acres off of the corner of a farm and potentially having impacts on that farm. Um, we had talked about what some of those options could be for, for county council to consider. Uh, the draft provincial pla- provincial planning statement has kind of put the brakes on that. Um, but I think that again points to that, that, um, idea of, of allowing for some level of municipal autonomy in that regard. And if you think back to Dr. Caldwell's slide, uh, where he talked about, you know, the differences between, uh, Perth County and, and Gray County in that regard. I'll say that in, in, in recent years, Gray County, uh, has been fairly restrictive on, on, uh, lot creation across the countryside. And I think the fact that we were even at one point five, uh, is more indicative of, of the county's, uh, um, lot creation history in, in the early nineties rather than it is in the, in the last, uh, fifteen or twenty years in that regard. So I think depending on how the provincial planning statement, uh, shakes out, uh, this, this will be a future discussion probably at the county council table and, uh, at your municipal ta- municipal council tables on whether or not we need to look at being more strategic with where we create lots. So it could be that there are some areas in the countryside on a limited basis that, that are ideal for lot creation. Um, but it could be that there's other areas that we really want to hold the line and be quite restrictive in that regard. Um, so certainly depending on what, what happens here, uh, we can, we can report back to council with, uh, options and some thoughts for council to consider in that regard.
Thank you, Scott. Councillor Greg.
Thanks, Warden. Councillor Dubrin touched upon it and my question was, uh, regarding the integration of, of, uh, source protection authority comments. Uh, is this, is that something that you undertook or your expectation as a planning department is still that the conservation authorities and source protection, their SBA's would still be uh, commenting on the impacts separately?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, great question, Councillor Greg. We haven't directly engaged with the source protection, uh, um, authorities on the, the draft changes. Uh, certainly any future policy changes at the county or municipal level, whether it be at an official plan stage or a zoning bylaw stage. Uh, they're offered, uh, they have the ability to comment on those and certainly with, with the, uh, development applications. Uh, the source protection authorities are commenting on those, uh, in many cases through the conservation authority. So we certainly look for their feedback going forward. Um, with respect to sort drinking water source protection, uh, that's another one of the concerns with respect to this rural and agricultural lot creation. Um, is the impact on our water supplies, not just our municipal water supplies, but our private water supplies? And, and, uh, how that might change in the next ten, twenty, fifty years, uh, with our changing climate? Uh, and, and there's various product projections from across the world on, on how water resources could, could be changed. But simply put, if, if we're creating, uh, you know, hundreds of lots in, in, in the two thousand twenties, uh, what does that look like if, if our groundwater supplies look very different in, in the two thousand fifties? Uh, and, and would we get more requests for municipal servicing extension uh, to cover, uh, failed wells and, and result in inefficient investment and infrastructure in that regard? So although we haven't directly spoken to the drinking water source protection authorities just yet, uh, it's very much on our radar and very much as part of future policy changes or development application, something that we would need to consult further on.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions? Councillor Eccles.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to, uh, Scott. At the Good Roads Convention, uh, we heard the premier and a few other ministers speak about how much consultation had gone in to developing bill twenty-three and ninety-seven and everything else. And that was from their perspective, but in talking to, uh, networking with a number of other municipalities and officials, it seems like the impact is more towards municipalities and whatnot. And to a person, I, I don't remember any municipalities, even whether it was the Greater Toronto uh, or down to small Perth County or Duffran or Gray County that were ever consulted on this. Are we at the point where instead of just sending in comments, we lobby towards our MPP that you know, until more individuals or municipalities and groups that are affected by this have an opportunity to put input and positive input in towards developing this plan uh, be accepted before we can accept it as, uh, as an overarching little whipping voice that we're whipping persons that we, uh, are on this. You know, I just find it there was only, uh, from my understanding, half a dozen developers and a couple of landowners on the, uh, green belt or wherever consulted on any of this. And the rest of us just go along with it. And I think by June fifth, I have no faith that no matter what we throw in front of the province is going to be addressed or accepted. Total frustration with the whole process, the way it's gone. Thank you for my rant.
Thank you for sharing it. Scott?
Thank you for your comments, Councillor Eccles. Of course, staff as always will take direction from council in this regard, depending on how council chooses to go. I, I, I do empathize with the province on this, uh, topic because no doubt they're, they're seeing pressure on, on, uh, on creating more housing. Uh, and, and, and we know even in the county how tough it is to, to reach out to our entire county. Uh, so reaching out to the entire province, you know, would be very difficult. Uh, no doubt, you know, as a planner, maybe almost to a fault, uh, I would always advocate for more consultation uh, and, and broader discussions in that regard. Um, but that is, that is tough on a provincial scale. We are thankful to the province that they've given us this opportunity that they've given us, uh, until June fifth, the comment. Uh, I, ideally, we'd like to see broad, uh, consultation with not just municipalities, but other sectors too, particularly the agricultural sector, some of the farm groups, uh, individual landowners. Uh, one of the key questions that we've heard, uh, asked across, uh, planning circles and, 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 uh, farm sector circles is, is who was asking for these changes to, to the agricultural lands? You know, were, were there a group of organizations that were asking for more flexibility or more lot creation in this regard? And, and, um, we simply don't know. And, and if we understood more where some of these requests were coming from, uh, maybe we could look at policy solutions that might help address those, but, but not knowing, uh, where some of that drive comes from has made it difficult to understand, uh, you know, a potential path forward. So again, certainly we'll take direction from council. Um, but, but, uh, staff are, are, are trying to use this opportunity prior to June fifth as, as the county's ability to submit some comments.
Thank you, Scott. Count, uh, okay, I'll go back. Thank you, Scott. Okay, I'll go back to Kevin first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And surprisingly, when we had the Politicians' Day, Meet the Farmers Day and Katie, month, month and a half ago, planner from Waterloo, Mr. Edie. His numbers stated, what was it? One point three, one point four million watts are sitting vacant in, in Ontario today. Is it, you know, and the policies are producing more lots? Is there something we can put into this report then to say, look, it's not about creating more lots. It's about getting houses built in the lots that are already sitting there. And maybe continue to sit there for I don't know how many more years to be developed. You know, and we've heard urban sprawl for I don't know how long. And yet, from that analysis, the urban areas have, you know, in our, our service areas have a huge amount of properties to be developed. And yet, the provincial government says, oh, let's just go out and pick on the poor little municipalities in rural Ontario and dot lots all over the place. To Mr. Caldwell's point, which is really going to starve the province. Is that something that can be added in? Or did I miss that we've really got that added in there already?
Thank you for your comments through you, Mr. Warden. Certainly staff are, are open to some, some suggestions for, for any other points that council would like to see addressed. One of the discussion points that we've heard throughout some of these recent legislative changes, including Bill twenty-three, is, is there's a lot of emphasis on municipalities to take action to clear the road for future housing creation. But are there any legislative tools the province could look at that would help motivate some of those existing developers that might be sitting on approvals and choosing not to develop? Certainly in, in working with our friends at Econ Development, that's something that we can further reach out on to try to help understand the barriers. We're coming out of a very, very hot housing market and things have cooled slightly with the change in interest rates and, and various other factors. But simply put, you know, if someone chose not to develop during some of the hottest growth in, in, in recent memory, you know, what's, what's the barrier there? And, and in some cases, we might know, in some cases, it might be a lack of county or municipal infrastructure. In other cases, you know, it's a bit foggy here. And so if the province were to look at discussions with, with developers or legislative tools in that regard, that might be an avenue for further exploration so that we can, we can all be a part of the solution, work together as partners, whether it be counties, municipalities, developers, the province, to really look at, at, at opening up that housing pipeline in, in the proper locations where supported by proper infrastructure.
Councillor Debrin.
Thank you, Warden. And through you to add on to councillor Eccles' rant, I too is going to speak to the politicians meeting and the number of homes that are actually in the hopper already. We just need to open up the funnel was the analogy that was, that was used. I the province, you know, at Good Roads, the individuals did say that, you know, adequate or extensive consultation was extended. And we all know that we submitted consultation, we can sit, can, can, at the municipal level, at the upper tier, the OFA, everyone submitted their comments. But they reached royal assent before the commenting period closed. So I am very supportive of getting the, the comments in as early as possible to meet that surprise close of, you know, reaching out and having consultation and then listening or actually paying attention to that consultation are two different things. So I appreciate your extensive report and yeah, look forward to further consultation.
Thank you. Councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And, and again, to you, Scott, in the sense of we, we're hearing all about this one point five million homes over the next ten years and it probably doesn't help when you're suggesting getting five hundred new immigrants to Canada every year too. It sort of feeds that. But I think under, I think Mr. Caldwell talked about this is, and I think the map that showed it across the province, the ability to decide locally. And I don't know if that's, you know, I think we sort of have in our back of our mind where this may go. But how do we drive it home that give us the ability like in the past to make that local decision, just like that? Obviously, one size didn't fit all on that map that was showing the per thousand, right? So obviously in the past. So how do we, do, do we, do we focus on that if at a later time do we do a resolution that we circulate everybody like how? Something we need to keep in our mind that, you know, okay, this is the direction that you're saying, but give us the local, like, like at least, at least something. And I don't know if you, Mr. Warden, if that's something that would be in a subsequent resolution or, or whatever, but just like that map, obviously one size did fit all. So just food for thought.
Thank you. And in the broader discussion about more housing in the province, I've heard it said that the province thinks that we, the municipalities are the problem. I'd suggest we're not the problem because there are tons of building opportunities in all of our, our municipalities now currently. And I think municipalities share the province's goal of more housing for more people. And we're bending over backwards to get out of the way to allow the developers to do that in our urban centers or our, our built up centers that have services. So we're not the problem. And I, and I think our comments today back to the province, I, I think will help demonstrate that we're not the problem and we want to help. But you got to work with us. Anyway, enough of that. Uh, any further questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item, or do you want a break? Yes, okay. It is now twenty past eleven. We'll reconvene at eleven thirty.
One minute warning.
I'm getting a thumbs up from the all powerful IT at the back, so we will bring the meeting back to order. The next item is an addendum to P D R C W Natural Heritage Review Options Update. And again, that is for our Director of Planning, Scott Taylor. Would someone care to move receiving of that? Peter, do you want to do that to get you into the game here? Thank you. Counselor Eccles will second that. Scott, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this is, this is a follow up to a, a report we sort of left you on a cliffhanger on, on, on February twenty third. So this is the exciting conclusion, maybe. But this is a council will recall that they had directed staff to, to look at hiring a planning call just to, to look at the county's planning ecology needs based on the gaps that were left by changes that were made to the Conservation Authority. Council also directed staff to consult with each of our nine member municipalities on whether or not it was appropriate for the county to, to look at hiring a second planning and call just for, for the municipal needs as well. And, and so since February, we've had a lot of really good discussions with, with municipal staff. A number of municipalities took it through their municipal councils as well. And I'm pleased to say that we, we have support from all nine member municipalities to look at hiring a second planning and call just for, for the county and the municipal needs in that regard. Further to Council McQueen's question on, on the last report. We got down this road. We, we were consulting with the municipalities. We were drafting up job descriptions and putting out job postings for the first planning and colleges. And then we got the new draft for policy statement, which, which kind of had a big question mark on the natural heritage policies. So although we've initiated the hiring process, as I said earlier, we haven't made an offer on that first plan oncologists. And what you'll see in the motion today is we are seeking direction to hire a second. But we're also simultaneously hitting the pause button to say, we want to at the very least see these draft policies from the province first. And, and we do think that, that should those changes come back in, in a radical fashion. And maybe to use Dr. Caldwell's term, you know, radical and in not a good way. Then it might mean we have to go back to, to municipal staff and council to, to talk about what this could mean. And it very well might mean that we need to have another discussion at this table with respect to the impacts and, and what that could look like. But I'll take you through some of just the bullet points of this report. Just in case when we see those draft provincial policy statement changes, they're largely the same as, as they currently are. And, and they don't further redefine roles in that regard. So if that's the case, then staff would seek direction to, to hire that second planning call just and that second person, well, we, we'd have to hire the first one first. But then the second person would, would hopefully help you cover off your municipal needs in that regard. Whether it be on pre-submission consultation, or whether it be on providing comments on municipal development applications like zoning amendments or consents or minor variances or, or things like that. And, and so we have acknowledged through this report that for none of us, whether it be the county or each of our nine member municipalities, this wasn't a budgeted expense for, for twenty twenty three. Nobody knew that, that this would, would shake out exactly the way it has. And, and so it will impact us all in that regard. So what staff are recommending through this report is, is that if the provincial policy statement comes back with, without significant changes, that we look at hiring these, these two staff members. It would be covered through, through a, a variety of funding options, including some fees and services review at the county level. Some of it would come from levy and some of it might have to come from reserves in, in this first year. But then we'd, we'd work with your municipal staff to look at funding options, particularly for the second oncologist on a go forward basis. Starting in, in twenty twenty four. And, and so that might be equal billing to each of our nine member municipalities. And, and the cost of one of these positions, including all benefits and, and salaries and, and pension and everything else is about a hundred and one thousand dollars in, in two thousand twenty three dollars. So simply put, if we split that nine ways, you can do the math fairly quickly to, to understand what it would, would look like at the municipal level. If that wasn't an option that was, that was supportable by, by our member municipalities and county council. Then we could look at other options. So it might be that the county charges a fee for the review of each development application. It might be that the county bills out time for that planning oncologist. Or it might be that there's some sort of prorated bill, billing based on development levels. Our sort of guiding principle here was that largely speaking, the costs associated with development applications should be billed back to, to the developer or the person seeking to undertake that development. So whether it's the county billing those, those costs through, through a county charge, or whether it's updates to your own fees and services by law. That's certainly the principle that a number of municipalities got back to us with to say, yes, we support this, but no, we don't want it coming through general levy. We think that, that largely speaking developers should pay for this. So we've outlined a, a number of options there. We couldn't dig into the options too deeply until we understood sort of who was at the table in terms of whether all nine were on board and, and whether or not we had county council support for going this route. So I think that's all I have for now. Certainly happy to take any questions, but as you'll see from the motion, we're, we're looking at having this report supported. We're looking at circulating the report further to municipalities and conservation authorities. And we work with, work with municipalities for a funding mechanism for twenty twenty four and onwards. But that we don't take any immediate steps based on, on the, the uncertainty of the twenty twenty three provincial planning statement. The only other thing I'd add here, and one of the reasons why we thought it pertinent to bring this report forward today, even with respect to the, the uncertainty around the provincial planning statement is because if county council were to say today, nope, county doesn't need to be in this. We don't need to be hiring on behalf of our municipalities. We'd like to let each of our nine member municipalities know as soon as possible, so that they can proceed with sorting out their own options in this regard. These changes did take effect on January first of twenty twenty three. So, so there's been a lot of, a lot of scrambling since then. And in some cases, some hiring of consultants as a, as a stopgap measure in order to address these policies, but hopefully we can, we can see fit to find our way forward in the future. Once we have those further provincial changes understood. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Warden. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions? Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you, Warden Mill. To you. Thank you, Scott. And I still have concerns about the decisions that are being made at the provincial level. And I'm wondering if there has been any discussion with our local developers to express to them the concerns that we have and the time and cost. The additional time and cost that it may be imposed on them as a result of the province removing the natural heritage commenting from the conservation authorities. The, it is going to affect developers. Bottom line, it's going to affect them in the pocketbook. It doesn't, doesn't save them any time or cost. And if we haven't somehow mentioned it to them, perhaps we should. And maybe they then could express their concerns to the decision to the province.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your comments and question, Council DeBreen. So we haven't had targeted consultation with our developers in this regard. But we have had discussions, you know, if you're meeting with them on a proposed new development, we've, we've tried to keep them in tune with, with what's going on and, and the, the decisions that are being looked at by county council in this regard. I will say that some of them have, have noted that they work in other municipalities outside of Gray. And, and some of them have shared the solutions that other municipalities are taking. And, and in some cases municipalities have simply hired a consultant and, and they're billing that consultant's time back to, to the developer in that regard. We have heard some concerns with that approach, both in terms of the total costs and in terms of the, the time management and the ability to get timely comments back. So in, in the developers and some of the private consultants that we've spoken to, there was a great degree of support for the county's proposed option in this regard, because they felt that there would be I don't want to say more control, but, but a better idea of the costing associated if they were paying upfront, front through those development application fees rather than, than build out on an hourly basis through a consulting peer reviewer. And that's not to take away from any of our peer reviewers. They, they do excellent work and there's consummate professionals. But I think in, at least in, in the bodies that we've spoken to are the ones that were honest to us anyway. They, they, they've supported Gray County's direction in this regard and the direction that's been supported by our member municipalities with respect to getting efficient comments. I will say just further, when the changes were first announced through Bill twenty three, I think there was some ringing of hands in the development community to think, oh, great. Now we don't have to, to have the natural environment review anymore. But once that nuance came out that, no, it's simply that you're not getting that review from the Conservation Authority. You're going to need to get it through other parties. I think there's been a bit of a, a shock to the development community in that regard. And, and in some cases it has created delays and extra costs in, in processing their applications.
Thank you, Council McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to carry on with that. I mean, we were all dumbfounded to think, well, why are they taking out the commenting part of the, of the conservation authority? I know we all were scratching our head. But you said the policies haven't come out. If I was a betting man, except for the Toronto Maple Leafs, I would say that there's going to be some major changes coming. That's the only thing that makes sense. Like just in the sense of, of that, only because like, why wouldn't you leave it with the conservation authorities to be making those comments? Like, it only made sense. That's where it was. So I don't know. I, I think that still more to come.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. Next item is the IT five year strategic plan. Would someone care to move receiving of that? Counselor Hutchison? Counselor Kivini? Jody McKeckern is our IT Director. Jody, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, members of council. So I am excited to bring this five year strategic plan report to council this morning. Over the course of last year, we engaged Perry Group Consulting to develop this plan for us, and they had previously done a fair amount of work on different assessments with IT. They had the previous IT strategy plan. They have done work on disaster recovery planning for us. They've done skills assessment, looking at sort of the training and levels of talent that we have on the IT department. And now they've come back to provide a, a new and refreshed IT, IT strategic plan. So what I'm presenting today, there are, as I see it, essentially four main themes that come out of this strategy plan. In the report, they are not, it's not presented exactly the same way, but these are encompassing of the recommendations that they've made. And I find it a little simpler to present the recommendations in this fashion. The one exception being they did have a category for cybersecurity. And I've left it out at this presentation and the report because the work that Evan Davis brought at the beginning of the year was more complete in terms of our cybersecurity roadmap. So I won't be talking about that today. The themes that have come out of this report for us are improve IT governance. That's sort of a perennial recommendation. Anytime you engage someone to tell you what you're doing in IT, they look at governance and tell you where you can get better. Fully utilize business solutions or essentially better planning, customer service, modernization and IT engagement. And I'll go through those each in turn. So for the recommendations around governance, IT governance includes not only your foundational policies in terms of the controls you have on systems and data and who can do what. But it also includes developing policies and processes that are repeatable and efficient. And guidance around what decisions are made on technology. In that regard, one of their key recommendations was looking specifically at how we handle projects as a corporation. And so we had previously developed some of the governance around project intake. So assessing which projects are recommended to take on and prioritizing those or aligning them with different years and making sure they have the right resources assigned to those projects. Perry Group made a, a strong recommendation that we dust off that process and be a little more rigorous with it. And also be more formal with the project management controls that we have in place around the projects that we decide to do. They've made recommendations around our use of data. So both in terms of using data strategically to guide decisions and also to have a more, again, rigorous policy on how data is managed. And data management, again, it comes down to security. So you have the right classification approach to data that you have policies and, and rules around how, how data is stored and managed and quality control. And that we have a formal classification standard. So again, that looks at whether data is open and can be shared proactively with the public, whether it's for internal use only or whether it's truly classified and confidential and should have some level of protection on it. The other recommendation they made is looking at digital standards. So digital, digital standards, it's, it's essentially a list of pre-decided rules and I guess standards for technology. And, and that can cover everything from if we look at, if we are putting a new service on our website that allows us to engage with residents, then we should have some standard of what technology we use to, to set that up. So what tools residents are using to interact with services through our website. It also includes the technology that we look for when we go to market for software or the rules that we use when we're developing software in-house, again, to keep them to secure, to keep them to, sorry, secure, to make sure they interact with other applications, to make sure that we have some forethought into how we're collecting and using data. Other levels of, of government have implemented digital standards, including the province and the federal government. And they tend to be much broader than when you typically think of technology. You think of purely the software or you know, the, the hardware or, you know, the technical bits of it. But digital standards also tend to go a bit further and they think in terms of how the user interacts with that software. So they look at accessibility. They look at iterative design to make sure that the user group is getting the value that they want out of those standards. And it also helps ensure that when we do go to market, that we already have that list of requirements built up. So it kind of makes it a little bit easier and more clear when we're saying we need software to, to do a, a particular business function. But we also expect these minimum standards to be met, and that can save time and also provide clarity. I skipped one bullet there in terms of committees, structure around IT governance. So what Perry Group had recommended was that we establish one overarching IT governance committee. And then we establish smaller working groups around key functional areas and their recommendations with finance and HR, asset data, GIS, and what they're calling a digital services advisory group. And then of course, if required, you would have sort of smaller feeder groups or working groups that deal with very specific topics or very specific technologies to, to guide your, your development for those programs. That can be really complex, pardon me. And it does take a lot of it does take a lot of staff time. So we're, we're starting a little bit more slowly. We are looking to establish project management or project steering group that would review the recommended or requested projects for IT. And we've already started a digital services advisory group, or we're calling it a digital services working group. And it's, it's one initiative that I'm really excited about. I'm really happy about it. We have really good cross representation across the county, across all departments. And we are taking on some of these issues around either projects that do have an impact on all staff, training or, or the technical standards. And so they've already had a few meetings and we've done some good work and we've already spun off a, a smaller group to look specifically at the work or the considerations that need to go into our data management and data strategy. And we'll see where that goes, but so far it's been pretty, pretty productive. I think the other aspects of this, they will kind of grow out of some of the work that we hope to do around strategy. But I'll cover that in the, the next topic, which is fully utilized business solutions. So in IT, we have the two departments, the infrastructure and the business solutions department. And business solutions has always been tasked with not just support and development of software, but also the planning and assessment where our staff work with other departments to make sure we fully understand the requirements around projects that we understand the actual business processes before we try to implement software that, that handles the, the data or the automation around those business processes. So what Perry Group was recommending was that, first of all, we increase capacity. Our business analysts now are split positions where we have the business analyst or the BA is also one of our core developers. And so just based on the workloads we have, those positions are usually during the coding and the developing and less on the BA side. The second key recommendation that they're, that they've made is that before we go to market for, for new software purchases and new technology, that we actually do all that BA work and make sure that we have very well understood and very well documented business processes. This is really vital if we want to understand that work ourselves and understand how software is actually going to facilitate the business processes for us. And the third recommendation is that we develop either technology or department level plans for that technology. And if, if you've looked through the report, you'll see that they're using terms like vision and strategy and plan, and, and they all kind of imply different things. But to me, it just, the, the key take home for this, and it's really important, is that when we are running programs, like if we've implemented a technology to, to help with a major business area that we're really intentional about how we want that program to grow and what we want the software to do. And so that's why I think, you know, we'll kind of look at those planning opportunities. They kind of feed back into that, that proposed governance structure. The other, the third category was customer service modernization. And so I don't have the number on me. I think we have around fifty different services that a resident can initiate or, or needs to apply for permits to, to do a certain work through our website. And those are everything from a, a permit for an overlay overweight road or an address. We have different ways to request interaction with staff. And we have a range of the maturity of those digital services. And I'll get into that a, a little bit more on what we're doing about it. But the first step was really just to take stock of that and to see where we can make improvements or to see if we can make any efficiency. One of the things that kind of falls into that as well is the ability to sort of track and manage resident feedback. So right now you can request to talk to council through a delegation, or you can request to talk to a member of staff through a form on the website, and that's usually handled through email. And that's usually handled through email. And what this recommendation really covers is that we have some sort of ticketing system. So if that request comes in and it say it's going to a, you know, a group within a department, you can see who's already handled a request. If somebody was starting a request and went off, you can see the interaction that's already happened with our resident because it's not already, it's not tied up in an individual email or something like that. And then we have the full record of what that interaction was. So we may be able to do some analytics on what type of requests we're getting. And the final recommendation, I put it in here because it is important, but it also is sort of duplicated in the in the strategy work that Rob Hatton was doing in communications and to some degree Savannah in economic development is developing a strategy around customer service or customer relations. And again, you generally have software that in the business world, it's capturing leads. In sort of government, it's more capturing interest. But how do we handle that database and what value does it bring to the county and be intentional about it? And so that initiative will be led by either Savannah or Rob and IT will support as necessary. So in terms of customer service modernization, I just put this little graphic together just to help people understand what I mean by that. And so if you think about services that you may have had to initiate yourself, either with the county or one of the local municipalities, it can be a completely or a very wide range of how digital that experience is sometimes that, you know, the most basic form, you can find information about that service on the website, but then you still have to call somebody or get in touch. The next step is you can initiate the service online, but it's usually in something like a form that you either have to fill out in Adobe and send back through email or print it off and mail it in. And so as that matures, what you really want to get to, at least for, at least for processes that have impact for our residents and for staff is to be able to capture that data in an actual web form and pull the data into a database. And again, just like a resident request, be able to track the work that's been, that's been done on that, on that service or on that request through some sort of software. And so what the digital services working group is doing right now is looking at that inventory of services that we have and deciding which ones are most in need of, I guess, modernization and which ones would actually provide value if we put a little bit of effort behind. And so we're looking at things like how frequently are they used? Do we think the process is frustrating for residents and is money changing hands? Do they have to pay for a permit or something like that? And so we're, we'll be prioritizing those to see if we can make improvements on those services. The final category that I wanted to talk about was just engagement. And so at the beginning of Perry Group's assessment, they ran an IT satisfaction survey across the organization. And some of the good things that came out of it, people were generally really satisfied with IT's core help desk service. So that I think speaks volumes to the help desk professionalism and expertise. On the other side, we did find about a quarter of staff said they hadn't received any training in, you know, two years or more in specific to technology. So the things that we're trying to do to improve engagement for the business analysts that we have, we're trying to make sure that we have one dedicated to each department. And the idea here is that they understand the business of each department very well. And then if there is work that departments are considering, they have a point person in IT that they can discuss potential projects or, you know, how does technology fit into their workflows and that person can kind of be their go to expert. We are looking at different ways to improve training and tech awareness for staff. And that will be things like myself or one of the IT managers speaking more frequently with departments through an IT roadshow. Sort of what's new in technology or what's new at the county. We do want to rerun, pardon me, that annual IT satisfaction survey, just so we have some KPIs to track our progress against against the strategy plan and how well we're doing as a department. And I think we can do that as well on individual help desk responses. So we can track how well we're doing on those, you know, those individual or those core help desk requests. So the end goals of this strategy plan, you know, as I said, with the, with the business solutions section, like really, we want to be far more intentional and far more rigorous in our planning of projects. That will help us reduce some of the risks that we sometimes take on when we don't have those controls in place around projects, but also on the governance side too. We really want to make sure that we're, that we're very structured in how we're managing and documenting the data that we have and where it's stored. We do also want to make sure that we're maximizing the investment of the IT projects that we have taken on. So, you know, a lot of times the I suppose you kind of, you have a goal with a project, you launch it, you use it, and then you just run it in that state. But we really want to kind of come back and assess how, how are things working? Where can we go with this? You know, can we get more value out of specific projects? And then I think the final piece here is just if we improve awareness of technology for all staff, we hope that that has a little bit of efficiency in how people work in their day to day, how they interact with technology. In terms of resourcing some of those initiatives, what I'm showing here is a summary of the recommendations that Perry Group has made over the past two analysis. And so that's this strategy plan, but also their skills assessment that they had done the year before. And they identified, they identified a number of roles and skills that they deemed as missing in IT. And the one thing that I want to stress here is that they did not assess IT's current ability or our capacity to handle current workloads or the perceived future workloads. This assessment has looked at skills and services that we aren't currently offering or aren't offering to capacity. So again, whether or not we can handle workloads was not touched by Perry Group. It's truly, you know, do you have the skills to offer these services that we're recommending? And so if you look at, I guess, the top five there, which are the ones that I think the IT management team would agree are priorities. We're looking again at improving the capacity for our business analysis. We are looking as well for some resourcing around project management. And data management, we, we see as a priority, but again, in terms of hiring, I guess I'll come back to that. And then GIS as well is the one area where we have really talented staff, but we know for sure that they're under, they're under staff. The other recommendations they have, I mean, they're really important for IT to be able to deliver on these services. But we are more or less assessing whether this is something we handle with the staff we have, either through training, or if it's something that we can handle projects through outsourcing or consulting on specific projects. I am not making any recommendations or requests for any investment or staffing through this strategy plan. If anything comes out of this, I will either bring it to council in the form of annual budgeting or if it requires a separate report. The one thing that I will point out around resourcing is that Perry Group used data that they have from their own clients, which are predominantly municipalities in Ontario and also the IT research firm Gartner. And they're, they're more or less arguing that in terms of a percentage of staff or staff, IT staff is a percentage of full time employees. And IT budget as a percentage of the corporate budget, Gray County's ID department is below average in both cases. I don't think, you know, looking at those measures, you want to just pursue that as a target. But if we, if we do come back around and say these are the, the the roles that we'd like to add to the IT department, I do think that that lends some weight to say this is how other municipalities have handled it. In that shell, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. That was an interesting way of saying you're trying to find a way to update my password without me having to do anything. Anyway, good report. Any questions? Seeing no question, sorry. Oh, okay, Kim.
I just want to recognize Jody and the IT team for all of the work that went into getting this report before you and all of the work that they have been doing on security and the other things to try and keep us safe and keep us working effectively. In this particular case, I just want to commend the team on a really thoughtful and practical approach. As you can imagine, an IT strategic plan can tend to be a little less that way. And Jody and his folks worked really hard to make sure that the way they thought about this was going to be something that was going to make a difference either to staff or to the public. And I'm really grateful to that. So thank you to Jody and Evan and everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Gray.
Thank you, Warden. And to Jody, just a question on, did the account, did the consultants apply a a perspective on what or how private enterprise may go about conducting similar businesses? And contrast that against how municipalities work in terms of, do, does private pursue different alternative service deliveries, like contracting out certain roles that municipalities are more inclined to embed into future recommendations on new hires and so forth? Is, was the difference identified between the service delivery in the private sector versus the public?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Warden, they didn't specifically compare municipal IT service delivery to the private sector. They did look at tasks that they felt were more suitable for outsourcing based either on the complexity of them. So one of the, one of the tasks that comes out for recommended outsourcing was IT cybersecurity. I will, I guess an anecdote, I was at a conference a few years ago. It was an IT security conference and Gartner was speaking. And Gartner said to a group of municipal staffers that everybody needed their own security operation center. And it was going to take at least 20 full time employees to staff it. And so we're outsourcing that one. So and you can bring in people that have the right expertise and you can, you can develop a good team. But the amount of work that is required to run IT cybersecurity, you really can't do it all in house. We look at other aspects of their, of the IT strategy recommendations. And they aren't the kind of thing that you necessarily need to run an ongoing program. They require work to develop policy or governance or put that framework in place that then staff can handle as part of regular duties. And that could be something like disaster recovery or business continuity planning, where those things are, they're a large chunk of work to get it developed and established. But in terms of ongoing maintenance, it's, it's something you look at a few times a year to make sure that your, your plans are up to date or when technology changes. And then you, you have sort of workshops, the way that emergency management does to make sure that your plan is relevant in sort of IT disasters that you can envision. So again, just to reiterate, they didn't really look at the differences between private sector and public sector in that regard. But they, they did look at what is reasonable in terms of expectations for, for an IT, a municipal IT department to staff in-house versus releasing for contracts.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Jody. So the next report is from our clerk, Tara Warder. It's regarding code of conduct update and guideline for electric slash hybrid meetings. Someone care to move that, please. Counselor Pringle? Counselor Mackey? Thank you. Tara?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good afternoon, County Council. I'll just start by giving a kind of a brief history of our code of conduct to date. It was passed in and endorsed by council in 2019 as a result of some accountability and transparency measures that were introduced by the province at that time. And it does act as a guide for, for members of council and its committees. Members are able to consult with the Gray County's appointed integrity commissioner, who is currently a principal's integrity on both the code of conduct and any matter under the municipal conflict of interest act. Further to that, anyone is able to file a complaint with the integrity commissioner if they feel like the code of conduct has been breached or, or the, there's been a breach under the conflict of interest act as well. And the IC will, or the integrity commissioner will follow the established process in the, in the code of conduct to rectify either through a formal process or an informal process to rectify those complaints. So this particular report is coming forward as a result of direction given to staff in mid 2022 from the outgoing council, who asked for some policy clarifications around participating in and collecting more than one per DM for meetings that are being held simultaneously. So if this existing current motion is adopted, staff will bring forward a bylaw that will, for council's consideration, that poses to insert the following wording into the code of conduct under rule nine in the schedule of the code around member conduct. So the proposed wording is that members will not simultaneously participate in more than one meeting or collect more than one per DM for attendance in meetings that are held simultaneously. Further to the code amendment, staff also felt it would be beneficial to bring forward some guidelines or best practices around hybrid and electronic meetings and seek any additional feedback on this information or any other best practices you as a council feel we should discuss or talk about at this time. Some of those best practices include keeping your cameras on during the meeting for the benefit of the chair and for staff to take accurate records of the meeting and to get that clarity around who is present and participating. When participating electronically, participants should be in a stable location with reliable internet and avoid interfering in a, in a meeting while in a moving vehicle. Using it as a device that is suitable for a council meeting is also important. The procedural bylaw does provide for a few different options for electronic participation, specifically the phone, though it does not work very well. There are issues with sound. And as a member, you don't have the same rights as someone who is appearing on camera or in the room. So to keep all those rights as members balanced, it's ideal if members do not participate by phone. And just a reminder as well that the municipal act does allow for an alternate to be appointed to attend county council, your, as each municipality is able to appoint one member for the term who can attend to represent you during any absence from council. So happy to answer any questions, but that's all this report says today.
Thank you, Chair. Any questions? Oh, Counselor Greg, sorry.
I have no problem with the recommendation, but I do, just the one component and Zoom has precipitated this. In, in the past, you know, it would be physical. So it was literally impossible to be in two meetings at the same time. However, that said, in my workplace, I multitask in many different ways, many different days of the week and on different different roles. So there's, I can see where for some members, it would be a benefit. It's a convenience of technology to sit in on two meetings at the same time. I disagree with collecting two per deems for it. That's not right, but I like the flexibility that's still there. I can't imagine what the warden's schedule must look like. I just think it, it might be reactionary to handcuff some individuals from having that flexibility to sit in two meetings. One may be of a primary importance, one may be a little bit secondary and and they're in and out, but some people have the skill set to, to handle that. I just am reluctant to pass that part of it, disallowing being able to be in two meetings or more than one at one time. But I'm fully in support of not being able to collect more than one per dean. Those are just my comments.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess in response to Counselor Greg, this issue did come up at our last term of council and we had a report from the integrity commissioner. And they said something to the effect that you had to pay, pay attention to more, you could only pay attention to one meeting. And so their recommendation is that members would only participate in one meeting at a time, that you couldn't actively fulfill your role if you were participating in more than one meeting. It was something to that effect. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Tara, did you want to add something? Sorry.
Yes, if I could just respond to Counselor Greg's comments, because I do agree with what you're saying. And the, the choice of the word participating, I guess, is very purposeful in that it would suggest that a person is not to, I guess it's, the goal is to reflect and replicate the chambers as much, as much as possible. So a member around this table probably would not, I would think, would not be actively participating in a council meeting. And then say, taking a phone call at your desk in the middle of the discussion. It's typical that a person, they may, that situation may come up. So members would take, remove themselves from the meeting, take the phone call, participate in another meeting, but they're not still actively participating in, in a council meeting. So the integrity commissioner did speak to, perhaps there are some opportunities or situations that may come up where it might be appropriate for a member to attend two meetings that are going on at the same time, but not necessarily actively participate in, in both. So that participation word, I think, evokes a certain specific meaning.
Counselor. Oh. Did you have something else to add?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. It was nothing, I have one other question, but it was nothing to add on, on that part, so.
Thank you very much. That's what happens when you get two chairs in the meeting. So Counselor, how close you had a question?
Let's see. How's it going to be exercised? And I'm thinking about being at, being at a conference. We're, we're attending a conference and whatnot, and then you're at the conference, putting in a per diem for the conference and participating if there was a committee meeting or something here. How, I mean, you know, you're, you're there for the full day doing the conference thing. But for three or four hours, you're in your hotel room. Because of what Counselor Greg said, you know, Zoom allows us to do that. But I guess, how do you deal with that, where you take the time out of the conference? And, you know, is it just a day that you don't put in for that meeting? Or do you put in for a day's per diem for being at the conference? Just a thought. And you're nodding, so you have the answer. Thank you, Tara.
No, unfortunately, I actually don't have a good answer for that. And I would look to council, this is very much your code of conduct. So I would, I would look to council to see what you feel as a group would be appropriate. So there would be, that's a good example of a, a situation where you're at a conference. You would be receiving a per diem for that day for the conference and then a possibility of receiving a per diem for, for a meeting. So whether or not, and we could also have that discussion with the integrity commissioner as well. If council would like, they do come every year, we'll schedule them in later this fall to come and do an annual update. And if there's any pieces of the code that are unclear or need clarification, and I think that's maybe a good one to raise with them. We could certainly, certainly do that.
Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you, Warden, and through you in response twofold. In our practice at our Southgate level is that if the meeting is not separated by more than two hours, you claim a full day as opposed to two half-days. In the case of attending a conference, you're already being paid a full day per diem. What you do with that time would be, I, I feel personally, if you take an hour and a half out for a committee meeting, you're still being paid for the full day regardless. My, my comment was the, about monitoring versus participating in two meetings. If you have employment outside, if you run a business, if you have employment that you are on standby or you're monitoring at home, you have two computers. How, you know, you have to be your own agent for are you giving the council meeting a hundred percent of your time? And, or are you participating in another full meeting? You could be monitoring emails and we had this discussion at training yesterday with our principals integrity whereby what would you do? And our mayor indicated like, excuse yourself from the meeting as you would take a phone call here. You would leave the room. Excuse yourself, notify you, and I think you covered that well in, in the, in the report. So just my comments as to how I would think through the process. Certainly Zoom creates new challenges for us all.
Thank you. I'll just Counselor Mackey and then I'll come across to Greg.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. My comment is we should behave the way we would have without Zoom. But in regards to that, Tara, you, you mentioned you don't want people using a phone. There, there are places where there's no, no Wi-Fi. I mean, I know I participated from a spot where there wasn't a Wi-Fi, so I utilized the pairing of my phone with the laptop. It's still probably, I don't, from a technological standpoint, is that still an issue? Or?
And through you, Mr. Warden. No, I wouldn't say that if, if the data that your phone is providing is equivalent and stable and, and would work the same way that a Wi-Fi would at home. And I think using that data would be, would be appropriate. It's more of the, the device that doesn't always, the use of the phone as a telephone or, or landline and participating in a, in a meeting that way isn't really ideal because of the, the sound issues it creates. And we can't see members, we don't know if, it's difficult to, for the chair to know when a member would like to speak specifically. So use of the phone more so as a, a telephone rather than using the, the data off of it to, to have that Wi-Fi connection.
Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Warden, and just my, my follow-up to my earlier question and, and I'll be brief and quick and that's all I'll say in this. But good point by Counselor Eccles, I totally agree with Counselor DeBreen though. I mean, if you're already collecting that per deem for the full day, that, that should supersede that, that alternative. My other question, my other point was I could service five people in another workplace. The moment I pulled this out, I am completely disengaged with those five people and I can have a high level of service without the phone. I've sat in meetings where someone is on this three quarters of the time and I feel there's more disengagement from that individual that's functioning in the meeting in that manner than there is perhaps someone that's sitting, sitting idle and meekly participating in secondary. That's all I'll say about that. The phone can be as, as or more disruptive.
Fair point. Any other question? Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you. Just to, to follow up on internet instability. The, I mean, we all know that our rural internet sometimes can be a challenge. We can have a good connection at the beginning of a meeting, but it may come up that your internet is unstable and there may be a requirement to turn off the video but still be participating. Will there be some leniency given, given the fact of where we live?
Yes, of course. Anybody that doesn't have high-speed internet, I mean, it's a challenge. We all recognize it. We've all experienced it. So, you know, I, I don't want to speak for Tara, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna disconnect you from the phone or from the line if we can't see you. You can hold me, you can hold me to that. It's tough enough. I will agree. Somebody made the comment, it's hard to, to recognize somebody if their camera's not on. It's hard enough for me sitting here and I've got Peter's smiling face in front of me and I, I still can't see him waving his hand. So that's my problem also, not his. So anyway, any further discussion on that one? Counselor Eccles?
Just one point to clarification and back to Counselor DeBreen. What I was mentioning is, you know, and so I sit on the conservation authority with you. If I'm at a conference at the conservation authority, it's not so much about being in one municipality. That's kind of easy to make. But if you're at a conference with the conservation authority and participating in a county council meeting at the same time. I think that, you know, that's where the conflict comes in and you shall or, or should, I would think under the code of conduct, be only claiming one per diem. Whether it's to the conservation authority or on your county council meeting for the day.
Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed of any? That is carried. Yes, I've just been handed a very neat little note here. It says lunch has been delayed. It should arrive closer to one o'clock. So that will allow us to probably, hopefully finish our agenda. And I see Scott smiling back there because he knows he's not back on the docket before lunch. Not yet, anyway. So moving right along then, our next item is a report from our director of HR, Jennifer Moreau regarding OPSU Lee Manor memorandum of settlement. Would someone care to move that, please? Counselor Eccles and Counselor DeBreen? Welcome, Jennifer.
I had in my notes, good morning, Warden and members of county council, but it's now good afternoon, Warden and members of county council. I'm here before you to present the results of our negotiations with our union partner, OPSU, with our long-term care home, Lee Manor. OPSU represents the majority of our employees at Lee Manor. The employees include housekeepers, personal support workers, activationists and a registered practical nurses among others. The negotiated settlement, I would note, was ratified positively by our union partners last week. The agreed to items represent normative changes within the broader long-term care sector and settled agreements with our last negotiations with Rockwood Terrace represented by Unifor and Durham. The cost of the agreed to items is within the upset limit approved by council prior to bargaining. And we've agreed to a one-year contract. That's the only thing I'll note is it's unusual that we've agreed to a one-year contract, but we did that purposefully. It matches our strategic priority of fiscal responsibility. OPSU is the union partner for both Gray Gables and Lee Manor. And we have made an agreement with OPSU that we will join in joint bargaining for the next round. So we will sit at the table with both OPSU Lee Manor and OPSU Gray Gables. We'll sit with a management team on both sides. And when we bring a deal to you, we will be bringing a deal that represents both homes. And we think this leads to better teamwork, better partnership, better equalization across our two long-term care homes that have the same collective bargaining partner. It is very similar to what we do with our Ontario Nurses Association. We have three bargaining units within ONA, within our long-term care homes, and we bargain together. So this is a good opportunity for us, we believe. And with that, you have the report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Next item is correspondence from Bruce County, response to the independent electricity system operators pathways to decarbonization study. Someone care to move the counselor body and Counselor Kentner will second that, please? Excellent. Thank you, sir. I'm gonna ask Randy to introduce the speakers for this next report.
Thank you, Warden, and good afternoon, everyone. So prior to staff providing a overview of the pathways to decarbonization report and a recommendation that we prepare response to the ERO posting, I just wanted to introduce our interim manager of climate change initiatives, Rebecca Denard. Rebecca is backfilling Linda Swanson's parental leave, which will be starting in the near future. Rebecca is from the suburb area and she was the executive director for a nonprofit group called Rethink Green, where she worked with mining companies, manufacturers, small business farms, municipalities, First Nations and other community groups to assist them with measuring their carbon footprint and making action plans to achieve greenhouse gas reductions. We are super excited to have some overlap between Linda starting and Linda going off on leave, which will help with the transition and, and we're excited to have Rebecca continue the great work that Linda has started and in moving forward with our climate change actions that have been supported by council. So with that, I'll now turn it over to Rebecca and I think Savannah is also going to be maybe some, providing some comments and thoughts. But Linda and I are also here to help provide some further thoughts as well. Just with an overview of the IESO report called Pathways to Decarbonization. So.
Thank you, Randy, and welcome, Rebecca. Good to see you. So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Just making sure you can all, you can all hear me. Good, excellent. So it's really my pleasure to, to speak to council this morning. It's, it's wonderful to be here and I've had such a great experience so far working for Gray County. So as Randy said, I will be taking over for Linda while she's on maternity leave. And I'm coming to you today because there's an opportunity to present some comments to the Environmental Registry of Ontario to provide some feedback on a recent study by the independent systems electricity, sorry, dependent electricity systems operator. And the study was called Pathways to Decarbonization. And basically the study outlines how the options available to the province of Ontario to increase the capacity of the electrical grid to meet projected demand. So Bruce County has submitted a letter with their comments. So we wanted to give council the opportunity to direct staff to also produce a letter. And in this letter, we could reaffirm Gray County's commitment to the net zero target as well as encourage the province to invest in strategies that would help us support that goal. So Going Green and Gray embraces energy conservation, innovation and nature-based solutions, promoting awareness and working with residents and businesses. Gray Crowning is creating a more prosperous, sustainable and healthier future that is equitable, accessible and inclusive of urban and rural lifestyles. Gray County's pathway to our net zero goals, as outlined in Going Green and Gray, depends on a decarbonized electrical grid. So residential, commercial and industrial retrofits and new buildings frequently include switching from technologies that consume fossil fuels, such as an oil or gas furnace, to those powered by electricity, such as a ground source heat pump. So the cleaner the grid we have, the more effective these measures are going to be in reducing our GHG emissions and mitigating climate change. Going green and gray also supports clean energy generation through non-emitting and renewable energy sources such as solar. And there are also several actions in Going Green and Gray that align with energy efficiency programs. If we can increase the electrical efficiency of current and future buildings and infrastructure, then we can electrify our vehicles and our buildings without the need to add additional capacity. So efficiency programs, we believe, not only reduce our energy and emissions, but also stimulate the local economy by encouraging residents, businesses and industry to retrofit their buildings and upgrade their equipment. So by submitting a letter, we hope to encourage the province and the IESO to invest in low-carbon electrical infrastructure and provide efficiency programs that will make the actions of Going Green and Gray more effective in mitigating climate change and reducing our emissions. So that's my, my piece and thank you very much for, for considering this idea.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any questions for Rebecca? Or Savannah, did you want to add anything or?
Thank you very much through you, Warden. I think we were, you know, happy to be circulated from Bruce County on the letter that they are planning to submit. And given the work that we are doing in clean energy with Bruce Power, with the potential new clean energy coming through hydrogen optimized and the pump storage projects and others, we thought this was an important report to be able to comment on, given we have the opportunity to provide comment. If county council was so willing, then it fits very well with our Going Green and Gray. And from an economic development and climate change perspective, it made a lot of sense to take the opportunity if you were willing to let us submit some comments as Rebecca has outlined.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Now we'll go back to the consent item that was pulled regarding Community Services Committee meeting minutes dated April 25th, 2023. Someone care to move those minutes, please? Move acceptance. Counselor Matrasovs, Counselor DeBreen? Counselor Greg, you had a, an issue, a question?
Thank you, Warden Milne, and through you, I just direct this to the chair. I'm just, I'm going to summarize a couple of questions at the end. But I found some of the language in the report somewhat eyebrow raising. And just a little bit of backdrop that I had written down. How do we get to $7,300 in approximated revenue? Uh, how do we get to seventy-three hundred dollars in approximated revenue that we'd lose? At five dollars a ride approximate, which is an adult fee. Uh, that's for one thousand four hundred and sixty rides. So I guess that is what we are assuming. Um, is the current ridership. Uh, to be able to generate that seventy-three hundred. Uh, some quick, uh, scrolling down, working off of our information on the website, Own Sound of Wyattins, four trips a day, Own Sound of Dundocks, four trips a day, Own Sound of Meaford, six trips a day. Uh, reverse trips that equates to twenty-eight per day. So fifty-six trips each weekend times sixteen weekends. That's eight hundred and ninety-six trips. And that's not including the Meaford to Blue Mountains or the Dundalk. Component, which could be another three hundred and eighty-four trips. Working off of what's on the website. So that's combined one thousand two hundred and eighty trips for one thousand four hundred and sixty rides. That the service is currently providing. Um, experiential, I have a friend who recently traveled from Blue Mountain to Owen Sound. It was a two-hour trip. Uh, it was after skiing. He gave it a whirl, but. Uh, at two hours, uh, found it a little lengthy. Um, that's just. His findings. So I'm just wondering, given the past ridership rates within the report, it noted reduced seating capacities. Would not be as much of a concern, but given. The past. Ridership. There's not that much ridership to have to be worried about. Um. Uh, proper spacing or reduced, uh, ridership because of. The, the virus. Don't want to say the C word. Uh, and if, and also it notes, it speaks to economic development in the report, but. If a five-dollar fare is too much. For individuals, then I think it's a reasonable expectation for committee to question the economic impact considerations that are within the report. Um. It's hard to substantiate that. I can't. Afford five dollars, but I'm going to travel to Markdale and dine at the restaurant in the corner. Uh, and generate economic development. So I'm just wondering in terms of the discussion that might have happened at committee and in terms of reporting back. Uh, I just was concerned with the staff recommendations and direction, um. Going forward after council head expressed some concerns in December regarding costs and the current GTR. And providing free ridership, uh, beyond that. And I also was concerned within the minutes, it speaks of staff advocacy for the service. But. I believe the reports that come to council need to be data-driven and objective, um, as opposed to any. Uh, resemblance of advocacy or, uh, anything that's constructing subjectivity into the report or into the data that we're given. Uh, I think that it was just noted going green and gray. Given the ridership numbers that are perhaps in place. There's conflict with the service that we're providing now with the Going Green and Gray document. Um, which might. Have the county discussing, uh, canceling the weekend routes when there's a, at. Twelve hundred and eighty trips. Over fourteen hundred and sixty. Approximate rides. I think it, it could be. So anyway, just wondering what discussion at committee occurred? Um. Did committee discuss how free ridership would be recorded and reported separately moving forward? And what's our plan on reporting this back through committee and, and having a more fulsome discussion on it? Thanks.
Wow, that was a lot in there. Chair, uh, Dane, you're the chair. Do you want to take a run at that?
Thank you for your question, uh, Counselor Greg. Um. During the discussion, there was questions and concerns about how the data would be collected and on the right number of ridership. Um, so that was a, a comment that was brought forward to staff. The question around the economic development portion, um, I recall that there was emphasis more on, um, not necessarily. Uh, using the weekend free fare ridership for the purposes of going to a job, but more as, more over the tourism impact of allowing residents from. Owen Sound to travel to a different area of the municipality or sort of the county, uh, for tourism opportunities where there's economic development that way. Um, there was conversations around, um. Wanting to collect, wanting to get more, gather more information from staff. Ultimately, the report was just received for information. Um, I'm sure that, um, staff might be better able to answer some of the more intricate conversation. Questions that you've brought up, um, but for in terms of the overall conversation, there was questions from the committee itself. On what you've suggested, which is the data collection of information as well as, um, how that economic development impact would be. It was more showing geared towards the tourism end of things. But I'll look to staff and perhaps CEO Wingrove to answer some of your more detailed questions.
CEO One Grove?
Thank you and thanks, Counselor Greg. Um. I'm sorry, I, I, um. I'm not able to get into the math of that. And in future, if, if you have calculations like that, if you can share them ahead of the meeting, then I can. Be better able to, uh, to comment on exactly the calculations that, that you've undertaken there. Um, certainly, uh, the discussion at the committee and what the report was providing is we are right now. Um, in the, in the process of putting together. Some ideas for council around the long-term sustainability of this program. As councils aware, we have funding from the province until twenty twenty-five. And the direction that we took from council the last time we brought forward was that we would continue to operate the system. Um. With those funds and with, um, some additional investment from the county, um, until the end of that time. So right now, um. That's what we're doing and we're still trying to, um, assess. Various options as far as how we might want to go forward into the future. Um, I know that five dollars doesn't seem like very much. But that is five dollars each way and the thinking was more around, um, people with families with kids and that and that. Ten dollars a trip adds up. Um, if you have to spend. Forty or fifty dollars to get to Salvo Beach, I, you know, does that, how much more do you have left to do anything else when you're there? Was, was part of the process because of the fares in this service, just like every other transit service are such a small proportion. Of what it costs to run the system. Um, we were just trying to, as a proof of concept over these few months. See what would happen. Is there more of an appetite to take the service? Um, if we take that even small. Um, uh, amount of, of fare, um, out of the discussion. And, and see what people think from there. With regard to, um, advocacy. Um. I think the word advocacy is used in this case i- as more of a synonym for marketing and promotion. Staff are trying to, um, still do what they can to get the word out for people that this service exists. And what it's like to take the service. We're very, very fortunate that, um, the driver's seat that provides the service for us does two things. They provide us with really excellent information, so we will be in a really good place to report back to you because they take great records. And they're also, um. I think constantly trying to measure, um, what the feedback and the, and the feelings of the passengers are about the, the service, the quality, the quantity. Um, the effectiveness of the service and they give that information to us so that we can pass it on back to you. Um. Of course, we're going to report back, not only just on this piece, but on the whole. Um, system as a whole, as we continue to work towards developing that longer-term, um, sustainability plan for your consideration. Um, I don't know. If there's a specific question there that I can respond to, again, I'd be happy to do so.
Um, no, I appreciate that response. The only thing I might ask or, or, um. Have you just informed me of, uh, is when staff are advancing this, um, will you and how do you apply? The carbon emission. Um, component of this service against going green and gray? So the actual impact that, I mean, if the ridership's not there, there certainly is a carbon cost that I think corporately we have to acknowledge and then. And your, um, plan to apply that against the going green and gray.
Um, first of all, people who will take transit where there is, um, one vehicle running with multiple people on it. You hope that what you're doing is, is taking cars off the road, that, you know, people are able to, uh, to share that single service that they might not otherwise be able to. But I, Randy, I know that you may have had some con- conversations with our climate change manager on this topic.
Uh, thank you, Kim, and thank you for that question, Counselor Greg. Um. We haven't, uh, dug into this, uh, 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 far at this stage, but I think, uh, with our energy and data coordinator that we're just in the process of. Of, uh, scheduling interviews and, and hope to be hiring, uh, in the next, uh, few weeks. That we'll be able to dig into some of this data and start to calculate some of that, uh, that information and bring that forward as part of. Uh, whether it's our updates regarding going green and gray or as part of those reports that, that Kim mentioned in terms of. What that looks like from a, from a, from a carbon perspective, um, obviously increasing ridership. Um, which I think is the intent or, or we're hoping that's the, the outcome as it relates to not charging fares on the weekend will. Will help, uh, as Kim noted, to take vehicles off the road and, and allow people to connect to various destinations and communities. Um, without having to hop into a car or in some cases, if they don't even have a vehicle, uh, giving them those opportunities to be able to access those places. So. Um, so that, but it is something that we can dig into a bit further when we have the energy and data coordinator. That's something that they'll be able to. Start looking at the data and start measuring, uh, from a, from a, um, carbon perspective, what this, what this actually entails.
Okay. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you. And through you to staff. Is there a formal portal through which riders can submit their feedback on their experience? You know, you go into a store and they, they give you your receipt and go onto our website and tell us what you think. Um, are we? Capturing that ourselves or is there? And, and what is the value? Should you? Use this in the future? What, what would be a reasonable fare? What, what value did it bring to your experience? I'm, I'm just wondering if there's. If we're capturing that in a formal way.
Short answer is I have no idea, but I'm sure Randy does. Or Randy can make something up. I don't know.
I, we're not capturing that, that information and, and data at this, at this stage. I think there was some discussion around. Um, you know, some of the drivers and the, the conversations and the interaction with some of the writers that the, that some of that is captured, maybe just, just in conversation in terms of. You know, um. Where they're potentially going and having those, uh, what's their, what are they planning to do when they get to those destinations? But beyond that, there's no. Data, hard data captured as part of that. Um, we do have, um. Uh, access to some information in terms of just overall, just tourism data and information in terms of spending habits and other things like that. So. Um, so, but that's not directly related to GTR.
Then I ask, would it be worth having that? Avenue of collecting that data, especially as we're evaluating and getting closer to twenty twenty-five, just something to consider. Thank you. We have, um, through, um, driver's seat, um, conducted, um, surveys, um, more than once. Um, through the, the period of, of operating this service and, um, always through our, our website, you have the ability to, uh, provide. Provide comments or input back to the county on any topic. So that is available to people. And they, as I said, they are very, very good, um, about, um. Providing feedback to us because people have to call and book their rides specifically with GTR. Um, there's an opportunity for a level of customer service and conversation that you wouldn't get. I think in, in a lot of other services. So we do find that there's really good value to that and we're grateful that it's available to us.
Very good. Any further questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Uh, just carried. Thank you very much. We have no quote. Thank you, uh, Randy and Kim and whoever else answered that one. Uh, we have no closed meeting matters. Any other business? Nope. Any notice of motion? None? One motion left. Who wants to adjourn? Counselor Matrasovs and Counselor Hutchison. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.